I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before any executive session?
There were not held.
Public comment? Just hold on.
Good morning, George Stankovitch Caliato. Once again, here for the senior citizens and veterans of our county. I'm hoping that, like I said, if there's anything wrong with their tax report, I just heard something. I know that meant less than, so I did know that, but I just wanted to make sure they are going by that. And if there's anything reported on their tax papers, they're supposed to get it within forty days, right? They have forty days to change it, and I advise you to change it because you don't know what trouble you're getting, if they'll allow you to change it later on or not, I doubt it. But what you have and what you're own, that is what you should be charged with. Now, one thing I am going to bring up, and he brought it up, Tim brought it up, that your salary for what you make is what they're going to go by? I want to see that.
They don't go by your salary at all, George.
Well, it says it on the sheet, though.
They don't go by your salary.
All right.
That's what you can ask Chrissy, that there's no way.
Yes, I don't know anybody's salary in here.
No, so he must, if he said that, that was a mistake or a slip. They do not go by people's salaries.
All right, because if that was the case, and it should be, anybody under forty thousand dollars today is in the poverty level. And what they should be charged of is what you make as far as, if you're under the poverty level, you could take your records there and show them that that's what you're getting for social security or whatever your job is, and that's what they should be charging. How on earth is somebody, if you're getting less than that, and I'm saying most people I know are twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and you get a bill for thirty-three thousand five hundred or three thousand dollars because you bought land back in the sixties or seventies, and now it just keeps on going up and up, and this school tax, and I know these guys don't have nothing to do with the school tax, I realize. And that's another thing that I have to get to these school board meetings because what they need on that board is average Joes. Average Joes that make less than thirty thousand, not somebody that gets a thirty-five thousand dollar raise in one year, and then they get the two and a half percent onto that. I mean, this is ridiculous. One person getting a thirty-five thousand dollar raise is making more than people that work their whole lives. That is ridiculous. I don't care what anybody says. A thirty-five, I wish I had a thirty-five thousand dollar raise, I wouldn't be here today. I would not be here, and I'd bet you all the people that are having trouble, they wouldn't be there. This is ridiculous. They have to find out a different place, a different way to go about things because they're driving people out of their homes. Honest people, that's terrible.
Any other public comment?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I want to introduce myself to you. My name is Bob Alonzo, for people that don't know me. I, myself and my wife, we run Volunteers in Medicine. We are in the city building down on Second Street, and we are a free and charitable medical clinic, and I'm here to just tell people about what we do. We serve people that are underinsured and uninsured, and that's like our neighbors. Not the people that have health insurance from the state or from Medicare, but people that are between jobs. And we see them every single day in our apostle office and in our affiliate's office in Tamahua. And I just wanted to tell you about what we do because we're trying to reach the ten thousand people that are in this category in Skooko County, and that's a very minimum number. And we're trying to do this by, we have a very aggressive five-year plan that we're trying to reach out to other communities, specifically Monroey City and Shenandoah, where we're looking to put, we've actually been asked by many people in these towns to come to those communities because they need a free medical clinic there. So our aggressive five-year plan is to get to both these communities as well as the outer reaches of Skooko County, Pat Higgins, where there is a vast area, at least twenty-five miles away from the nearest hospital. And we're trying to accomplish this by aggressively applying for the D C E D grants that are out there available for us. But in order for us to accomplish this, we need the help of businesses that are willing to partner with us, private individuals. It's a very aggressive plan that, like right now, we're just, you know, we're at the minimum that we're helping people right now, but we, our goal is to reach those ten, fifteen thousand people in our county. And I'm not even talking about Carbon County, which we will serve through our office in Tamahua. And that's a whole nother story.
What medical services, like prescriptions or?
Yeah, we have a nurse practitioner on staff every single day. People can come in for basic medical care, and my staff, including myself. You know, we also help people with social services, make referrals. We have a nurse practitioner with psychiatric background that does help in that area. And anything else, we have a partnership with Primary Health Network. For anything that we can't handle, we immediately refer out to them. So I mean, just pretty much everything that, you know, medical, we can handle and see through our offices.
Okay. Would you like to move the table again, sir?
Bob Alonzo.
Bob, God bless you for what you're trying to do and help people.
Oh, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks for sharing information, that's very good.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? I see you matching your hat, your hoodie, and do you have the matching folder?
She was, sir.
Is she? Okay, let's move on to meeting. If there's other public comment, can we have a motion to approve what was presented by the president on a work session?
So who?
Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can we motion to approve what was presented by children in youth in the work session?
Motion to approve.
Second. Oh, sorry, I skipped over the minutes. Okay, let's finish this one, children and youth.
Do you want to do the second, the work session?
Yeah, hold on, let's finish this one first. Children and youth, we had the second, other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve the minutes for the commissioners' meeting of March twenty-sixth?
So who?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Can I motion to approve the minutes for the commissioners' work session on April second?
So who?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the election bureau?
So who?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the office of senior services for a work session?
So who?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the tax claim bureau on the work session?
So who?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the county administration at the work session?
So who?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Finance is all informational. New business, county administration.
The county board has ratified the designated approved contract for the month of March two thousand twenty-five, motion requested at this time. And on behalf of economic development, approval of advertising for demolition projects in the borough of Shenandoah, fixer due back at control of the office four P M, April twenty-first, and open on April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, nine A M, and the country's board. And the award date is May seventh.
Can I motion for the designated approved contract?
Commissioner, I'd like to slightly change. I'd like to have the first eleven designated contracts voted separately, and then not include the twelve ones. I think motion to approve the first eleven.
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve the second, or the twelfth item on the designated?
Motion to approve the ovarian associates appraisal. Motion to approve.
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
I'm abstaining because it involves a family member.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve on behalf of economic development for demolition project?
So who, sir?
Other question, Commissioner?
Commissioner Fedora?
I'm ahead of myself today.
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Even resources office.
Good morning, commissioners and children and youth. We have three items. The first is the appointment of Tricia Moyer-Menser as a county caseworker one. The rate is two twenty-one point five six nine five, effective four twenty-one twenty-five rate for the contract. The second is the transfer of Melanie Shattering to county caseworker one, also with a rate of twenty-one point five six nine five, also effective four twenty-one twenty-five rate for the contract. Final one is the promotion of Jade Beddinger as a county caseworker two. The rate is twenty-three point zero five five one, effective four twenty-eight twenty-five rate as per the union contract. All appointments are pending drug test and physical, and all actions involving salary propositions being created are pending salary board approval. Also have three informational items, all from the coroner's office, all our appointments. Tanner Hauck as an unpaid intern, effective four four twenty-five, end date five eighteen twenty-five. Teresa Klatchenovich, unpaid intern, effective four four twenty-five, approximate end date six six twenty-five. And Colleen Glow, appointment as a deputy coroner investigator, effective four twenty-one twenty-five, rate is per the fee schedule. That is all.
Can I motion to approve the three appointment transfer promotion of children and youth?
Motion to approve the three, motion to transfer children and youth.
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to adjourn?
So who, sir?
Salary board, before any executive sessions?
There were not held.
Public comment for salary board?
Morning, Jeff.
Morning. You weren't getting away that easy.
Let me see your shoe.
Oh, you're good. All right, so no update on Ms. Gaffney, she's still not here. Ninety-six thousand dollar salary and benefits package, claimed she was on F M L A. Still doesn't show up for work, so of course she wouldn't be here. Lisa Stevens, still no update from my right to know or from Mike. So I'm not sure what the whole.
Did you want people to write it up to?
Yeah, but I shouldn't have to because the time didn't expire yet, you know what I mean? So I don't know if he didn't hear back from the A G or not. Speaking of that, again, the row officers, the March hours, nobody wanted to turn those in that say that they're here all the time. When I pulled in this morning, four row officers and two commissioner spots were empty. Very interesting. One of the row office people's vehicle were at their business at eight forty when I passed by on my way here, so just shows that they're not here. Larry, you made comments last week about only one man caused the problems with Mr. Halkovich's lawsuits. It was the whole administration.
One man started all of that.
Started, right.
That's what I said.
But between Boots, Mr. Bender, the retaliation, that's, I mean, opened the door for Jane Doe number five. We now have two other lawsuits for discrimination and retaliation. They're the ones that made this a disgrace to the county, and now the taxpayers are going to pay single-handedly for this. Boots, I think it's funny, when I walked in, I overheard Larry let Mr. Hess know that he informed you to abstain from voting for the Farm Preservation Act. Just shows the corruption in the county with the, you voted to get the increase on the farmland preservation so that your farm got bumped up, now one of your family members gets bumped up. But you were okay voting on it, you're under ethics investigation anyway, but you were okay voting on your own to get bumped up, but now you're abstaining from this one. And I think it's probably because Larry's a little bit smarter and doesn't want to get tied up and brought into anything, which is a good thing on his end.
Well, Jeff, stop just that. So Jeff, I did look into this one, this was, that I saw it was Harriken Farm.
Right.
So I asked what the process is, and it's a blind process. This is what they told me. So a farm, this application was put in how long ago? And they score the farm beforehand, but it's just a number. There's no name on it, and they score it.
Right.
And it's, you know, if it has irrigation, if it has adjoining.
Yeah, what's, I came here and, yeah, he explained it before.
But I just want to point out something, and I'm not against, it's Boots' brother, he applied for it, he gets it. None of the money's coming from, I checked into this, none of the money's coming from the county, it's coming from state and federal. But then I also, these are the offers that the Harringtons' farms get for solar and windmills to develop their farms. So I know.
So I was all prepared today because.
No, but that's, but just, no, I.
It's all good.
But this is, and I understand what you're saying.
But also, prior to you, he pushed and pushed and pushed to get extra funding in so that he got expedited, and now his brother gets expedited. I understand the process of where they fall and everything, but on the same token, does anybody?
Well, I asked if any.
Where does, where does, where does Richard live?
I'm not sure where Richard is.
Oregon, correct. Who farms his land?
I do.
Jesus Christ. The corruption, the corruption is unbelievable, unbelievable. So you're making, you're making the money on it, Boots, you're out farming it.
No.
He lives in Oregon, he has nothing to do with it.
The brother, the money goes to his brother.
Because he can't get another one on there because he was already on, so let's put it through anybody else's family name.
When I saw this was on there, I asked the process of it, how they did it, and they said it's blind, his application.
It's nepotism and it's corrupt, that's what it is.
But.
He increased the funding, so.
There's people on that board that have preserved farms. You know, they're preserving farmland, so we have farmland, I'm not against.
I'm all for it, but if it's done properly.
Because, because the last name attached to it, but it's still a farm that's preserved, that's not going to be a solar farm, not going to be a windmill, not going to be a warehouse, not going to be developed.
I get all that.
They give up their rights for futures and hopefully.
I know all about it.
And hopefully somebody in their family or somebody buys it and saves a farm for us.
But he was okay voting on his own, but now his brother that lives in Oregon that he farms on, and he makes the profit from, he thinks he should abstain from it. Which I think it was your recommendation, which I agree with, because he will come under heat for the other one, but.
And he agreed.
I volunteered to abstain.
Why didn't you, why didn't you abstain from the first one? Why didn't you abstain from the first one?
Solicitor said it wasn't necessary the first time, but I, to make sure it was all clear, I didn't really want to abstain.
All right, no, at least we have that on record because they wanted to know for the ethics violation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for salary board? Can I motion to approve the minutes for the March twenty-sixth meeting?
So who, sir?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller, you can chip.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve the salary board work session of April second?
So who, sir?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller, you can chip.
Yes.
Even resource office?
I have got enough for chairman.
Any new business for salary board?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, retirement board, before any executive sessions held?
There were not held.
Public comment for salary board? Just ask today? What?
I'm retiring.
Oh, retirement board, sorry. Retirement board. I'm not retiring yet.
I think Chrissy gets paid too much, I don't.
Is that what George said?
I'm gonna.
Can I motion to approve the monthly meeting minutes from the March twelfth meeting?
So who, sir?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller, you can chip?
Yes.
Treasury item?
Yes.
Controllers report. Sarah, would you read it?
Sandy, Sandy can pass all the information. Good morning. During the month of March for two thousand twenty-five, two members received refunds of seven thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. Two deceased retirees received prorata payments of sixty-two dollars. The market value of a retirement fund as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, was one hundred sixty-four million five hundred eighty-nine thousand ninety-five dollars. The total market value of the retirement fund as of April ninth today, two thousand twenty-five, is a hundred forty million four hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. Also, Amanda Colbert is requesting the approval to buy back six of her prior lease of absences. Thank you.
I want to inform that about the action taken
Okay.
from the retirement board. On February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the retirement board met with Cornerstone Advisor Asset Management L L C for the county's quarterly report update. At this time, it was recommended to move investments from Barlow, Haney, Mewini, and Strauss L L C to Birch Run Investments L L C. All the committee members agreed at that time, and the transfer was completed on March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay. Can I motion to approve the controllers' report?
So who, sir?
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess? Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yekantship?
Yes.
Treasurer Yett?
Yes.
Is there any old business? Can I have a motion to approve the action taken by the retirement board?
So moved.
Second, other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yekantship?
Yes.
Treasurer Yett?
Yes.
Any new business?
I'm retiring, please.
Thank you, everybody.